Okay, look, see, do I have approval of the minutes for the September eleventh? Mayor Council minutes. Have a second? Any more discussion? All in favor say aye. Okay, approval of September twentieth, call session, Mayor Council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion, that'd be a second? Have a second? Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye. Okay, October third, call session. Okay, have a second? All in favor, well, any more discussion? All in favor say aye. Harrison Tillman, welcome tonight. We always welcome you. Got good news, you're welcome. Give a report of the City of Lakeland year end two thousand eleven audit.
You've got blue lighters in front of you. If you'll pick those up. And if you'll turn to page sixteen, you'll go to basically where the general fund ended up last year. On that page, you can see in the first column, your general fund revenues were almost at one point four million. Your expenditures were at one point five. Now concluded in that was some completion of the facility and some of the equipment that went into it. So that's one of the reasons there's a rise in two thousand eleven about. They ended up with expenditures over revenues of five hundred sixty seven thousand. And then you had transfer in water sewer for about eighty, so you ended up with a net loss of about eighty six thousand. You've made a good fund balance over the years. So there's still an issue with over half a million in fund balance. So while you get into that what's mainly for, what type of capital improvements, not for operational improvements. So it shouldn't be bad in that regard. Your safety splash taxes in the next column, and you continue to utilize that for your own sidewalk work. You spent more than you took in, but you have fund balance of a hundred eighty four thousand coming in, and spend down fifty five thousand of that, but you still had close to a hundred thirty come into this year. And that tax seems to be holding its own. It's not growing, but at least it's holding its own. If you turn to page twenty, we'll look at water sewer and sanitation button. The water sewer fund is doing excellent. Had revenues of over seven hundred thousand and expenses of five hundred thirty two thousand, and operating income of a hundred eighty six thousand. And then it had some non-operating revenues, which was once at one time it was a Jeep grand as part of the sewer, the reconstruction.
Thank you more than that.
I can't think of that too. So there is about half a million dollars worth of revenue down there from that grant. But that still went toward capital improvements there again. So you run five hundred fifty thousand, with five hundred of that actually is actually granted as capital improvements. So you're looking fine there. You said page... Your sanitation button, which is the next column, is showing about two hundred twenty-eight thousand revenue, two hundred ten thousand expenses, and came out with about seventeen thousand of operating income. So it's doing well also. So all your funds are doing well. The only comments we had or things that we had to note were that you still had at least one department in whatever budget, and I think that was there as an unexpected item. And the splash button, I think you ended up spending a little bit more than expected as far as that budget. So that was just noted as a part of that stay.
That's what I'm trying to say, what you had to spend that money gone.
Well, your splash button, typically what I suggest is whatever you normally bring in, going into budget, you don't have to spend it all, but going into budget, it does spend it, because you really don't know, you know, exactly what you're going to spend on the end of year. Because you also have revenue, but based on prior year history, I would just set the budget at an amount close to that revenue that offset your expenditure or so. But it ended up actually on different fund balance, I think that's why it ended up being a little low. If we set it that way, then you spend a little bit more of it prior year. You can build some of that up if you need to. There's no problem with that, but that would be because you anticipate larger spends. Yeah, well, you know, where can you build it up?
Well, I try to look like we got matching grants, like on Oak Street, we got that money in there for that.
Right.
For that TE grant.
Right.
And then we try to see how much money we got, then pay for another street, is what we try to do.
Yes, exactly. So you do go through a buildup period, maybe you have it up for matches or whatever you want to do. So that may carry money into the next year. So it doesn't necessarily all flow out either, because you do have to build up monies for that type of matching grants and for capital losses. But that's especially the way most governments are doing it. I have your charts in the end, so you can look at your history. Your overall revenue are down, but most of that's due to inter-dell-brands that come in and go, they'll be there one year and then they last the next. Your revenues in general are pretty stable. Property taxes were down slightly. Most of the other taxes were about the same. No particular big change there, which is not surprising as a policy, but most, up until this past year, most of them were seen as positive. And then your general fund expenditures, while they look like they're way up, there again, there's some capital items in that two thousand eleven related to the city hall. But your actually safety items, public warrants, they were all down. And there's a water sewer chart, which shows that your revenues, they dip down, but now they're back up to about two thousand eight level. Your costs, while they're up a little bit, it's really no, it's actually down from two thousand nine levels. So that's holding its own, doing well. Plus you made some major capital improvement improvements in the last three years, spent about three point six million water sewer capital. And then probably your sanitation button also looks good. Still, it's at its highest level of revenue. Expenses are up somewhat, if nothing else, are the few, because everybody's saying that. And then you had a little bit of capital outlay. But overall, things, things were looking well. Any questions?
All right, we ended up at the end of the year, what incentive?
You know about the terms of fund balance?
Yeah.
You got about fifty five thousand. Some of that's capital like receivables and capital items. You're not seeing a lot of cash in that fund, because it finished the run. You can watch operating, you have to spend for operational purposes.
What I was looking at, did we afford to buy a new garbage truck, what I was looking at, in pain?
Not unless you do something like a capital lease and spread it out. I don't think you have, you know, unless something changes this year, I don't think you have the cash flow or cash dollars right at that button for something that large. But you might be able to look at capital lease, spread it out, costs over three to five years, depending on college, if you're looking at. And that may be a way of working around it. I don't know where you are, I think you just started new splash, didn't you, or get ready to do it in the future. You may want to plan ahead and put something like that in your splash.
In splash?
In your revenue check, but you didn't have that.
We got coming up, new splash, it's going to be on streets, but we got a lot of streets paved in Lakeland yet.
Right.
And I hope that we can have every one of them paved. A big first time in history, but that's our goal. Find out how a pothole in town.
That's what most people...
Might be unreal to think that, but we're working toward that. We've got some bad head streets repaved and in good shape. That's all capital, right, when you do your streets like that?
Yes, yes. And then of course, as you're getting out of the house, paying those renter expenses, so that's a lot of...
Well, we got some money we're spending this year on some new stations. We always spent thirty seven thousand on one, the other's a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five. We looking to get fifty thousand back in the emergency grant, I hope. But that's capital.
Yeah.
improvement there.
That is a similar...
That's the sanitation, I mean, not sanitation sewer.
That's the sewer. Yeah, you use grants very well to supplement, otherwise moving about partly in there. And even sidewalk projects.
We hadn't had grants, we wouldn't be doing nothing.
I agree.
Except raising taxes.
I heard it.
Now, if we get ten percent less money on our lost tax, which goes directly into the general fund, is that right? Okay. So that amount of money that we lost would be what, would be fifty something thousand?
Is it five hundred and forty thousand? Probably between the two, ten percent.
Well, it's to you, it's about two hundred seventy, sorry, about two hundred seventy-five thousand, so ten percent of that, you know, that'd be about forty, forty seven thousand.
Now ten percent comes off the top. Ten percent comes off the top. So it'd be more than that, whether or not.
No, I thought you were suggesting that you're percentage.
Let's say we're going to get ten percent less than we been getting off the top up here. Be clear.
Oh, you're talking about, oh yeah, that's off the top, I see what you're saying. You're talking about in terms of the changes they made where there won't be collections of sales tax. There won't be sales tax on VHS, there won't be sales tax on energy manufacturers.
That, that we don't understand. Y'all understand automobile tax, come on. What I'm after from law, your fund ended up five hundred, five hundred something thousand?
We get a hundred and seventy thousand.
Hundred and seventy thousand is what you end up with.
That's what we'll end up with.
That's what you're getting based on your current agreement.
Yeah.
Of split on the city account.
Okay, if we start getting ten percent more, just so, so that we get ten percent more in the account, where would we have been this year?
Well, you would have been down about twenty seven thousand dollars. And so there would have been that much more, but that's...
Or we'd be, we'd be in Hollywood.
Oh, yes.
Twenty eight thousand dollars, all right.
Anybody got any questions, Ms. Harrison? We all in there, if you can tell me good, good reports. Little great of good reporting. You like to hear those good reports, being good, right, in some shape? All right, thank you, sir, I appreciate your work. Sandy Sanders, Lakeland Air Chamber of Commerce, going to talk to us on tourism, everybody seen?
That's the plan. I just wanted to bring y'all up to date on some projects that we have going on for Lakeland, active for all of the county. Things that are going to be happening in the next two or three months, so you'll be up to date and be aware of these things. We have, in November, November twenty eighth, through the thirty, we have a Georgia Tourism Resource Team, big across the United Eagle, from the state that will be coming here. This is something that we've been working on for some time to get them here. They will actually spend part of the week, the first two and a half days, they're going to be in trench camps and home war, and then they come here in the last part of that time doing the same thing in both communities. They're going to be preparing an inventory of tourism products, things that we have here in our county. They will be interviewing people during this time, touring, all of the different things that we have, just an array of things, from downtown Lakeland to the olive farms, to the creek center, to the, you know, Laxley Lake, to the Laxley Hall River, all kinds of different things, to an inventory together. They go back after this time and put a report together, a plan that we can use for developing tourism. That is a very important revenue dollar for our community, and it is broken, a number of people that are filling here. The, like I said, this is going to include, and they will be staying over at the packing cabin, the Rockland Cabin over there, and in the Carter House area, which Rockland is, is given that space for being used during this time. That will also be the, sort of the, the location for them to work out of. We're going to invite people from the community, and we'd like to include all of you to be a part of the interview process, which will be on one day. You will go individually, interviewed by this team, about things you see in Lakeland, go out Lakeland and near county, what you'd like to see, they'll ask you different things from the culture, the heritage, our downtown, our agritourism, all our resources, and put, this will be part of the package. During this time, we will also, we'll have dinner for some people, we'll have a reception for people in the community to meet this, meet this team. This is about a forty thousand dollar investment by the state in the lake to do this. They did this for, have been doing this for several counties. It's done for Brooks County a couple of, two years ago. Brooks, if you talk to anybody over there, you can ask them the advantages that they got out of this. Very well spent state money on each of the communities. Some of the things that I am going to do and asking for you, from you, is naturally the trolley is going to be a very important item that we're going to need during that time. As that, while you do an excellent job already of keeping our city clean, we, we need to, we're going to go to the businesses, to the U, to everybody, to county, to everybody too, let's put an extra special effort in just making us really pristine during that time, before, you know, before they get here. I need your participation in the interview process, and we will be sent about to Diane, and you can sign us and do that. We are going to be asking in the community for financial support for this, but it is going to take from dinners and receptions and different things that we're going to be doing. So we will be asking for that. We do need someone, or two, one or two people from Diane, the police department yourself, to be on a planning committee to help us prepare all this for these people during this time. So I need that, that for me as well. So if you could be thinking about some help with the planning, having somebody so that you have a contact person at all times during this planning process. Okay, another item, we're real excited about the opening of the mountain bike trail. All over, I guess, for me, you're with this, it's on one thirty five, and you're part of the action with the other, I guess it'd be referred to as an old city dump, I don't know what it is. The, this has been worked on now for months, and Moody Air Force Base has been just absolutely great in sending over volunteers, up to twenty people in time, equipment, everything. The Boy Scouts have been very instrumental, and other people under the direction of Chris Johnson, who, I believe, came in and spoke to you on two or three occasions. You would be amazed at the transformation of this area. None of it has really been discouraged, that's the main idea behind the bike trail like this. It has, and it's, when I've been back there recently, it's amazing how that has transformed from a city dump to the natural trees and the beautiful area that it is. In fact, some of the trash that was dumped back there, Chris and some of these guys are saying, they're now finding plants that you would never find, hiding in the woods that's made, they dug up in their yard, they dumped them out there, and now they use it as growth and all that, and different things, grow them in the air. But it's, it's really, really nice. On that value, ten AM on Saturday, October the twentieth, we're asking for your participation. We would love for you, we want very much for you to be there to participate in the river capability provided by the community every time. It's a mile walking through the woods, but it's, it's a very, very nice and very safe trail for government. It is designed that you cannot put a boat ride vehicle of any type on the trail, it just will not, will not work. But we need to be able to park that day in the area, cross one thirty five, right there around by the oxidation pond, that flat level area right in there. We really could use police at one side of the bridge at the intersection, because of people crossing to help, help with that. It would be excellent if we can get mosquito spraying the night before, the earliest, to back up into the big field. See there next to that tree, there's a parking area, but we will not be parking that, that there, people will be standing around. If we could just, if we could get that done, in case there are, you know, it warms up a little bit at that time.
What, what date is that on?
This is on Saturday, October the twentieth, ten AM.
Okay, Diane, you would make the note, let's get BJ to spray that on the afternoon of the nineteenth.
Again, we need another, we need a person here from the city, they are on the planning committee with us. Planning committee, and we're going to meet this Thursday at ten AM in the chamber. The chamber has spent so far on materials, but everything else has been, there's no labor, there's nothing, volunteer work. We've spent approximately twenty five hundred dollars on materials. We have asked for donations from within the chamber, board members, so far we've done about four hundred and fifty dollars. If there's any possibility, you can come up with any financial support for this project and be greatly appreciated. We are going to be applying for, and we'd like, and I'm asking officially for you, if you, if the city can participate with us in a state trail grant that the Georgia Department of Natural Resources has labeled. And apply for that, because we would eventually like to add, connect this course all the way around up the bridge, and it could go all the way to the, to Camp Patton, to the Boy Scout mountain bike trail. It is amazing to meet a number of young people, a number of parents all over. They go online, they look for these places, there are trails in Florida and other parts of Georgia. It can, this can really be a good thing, it's good for our own young people, it's good for the Scouts in our, in our area. And I think it's going to be a real, real plus for our community. So if you can help us in any way that you can, we appreciate all you've done in the past, we appreciate the Lakeland. But I think it's, we put to use now, be smart with it, just, I guess, if there's anything to do with it, that you can do with it. And as they found, you don't only need, because you're going to find something that you didn't want to find, so it's just a very, very natural space through that. The last thing I want to present to you is that the Christmas parade starts on, it's December the, December the sixth, I believe, is the first Thursday, and it begins at six PM. And again, it would be good to have someone from the city on the parade committee. We will need law enforcement, and this is something I wanted to discuss later with the chief of, about, Austin, change in the parade route and lineup area, to make it not quite as long as it has been in the past for some of the kids and all that to walk in. So anyway, we'll be, we'll be doing that, just a virtue to win, but that is, that is kind of, so these are just some of the things that we've got going on right now involving tourism, and it's going to make you aware of it. Appreciate your help. Anything you can do to help with this?
I'd like to make a motion that we donate two thousand dollars to the bike trail. Ms. Sanders?
Ms. Sanders? Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Sanders, you say that the trail would go under the bridge and back to...
Well, we, we hope to something extend it, because y'all still all of a sudden, they have to be available on the other side of the oxidation pond in this wood, and the Boy Scouts, there's a little private plant, and then there's the, the Boy Scouts that therefore it was built, this just seems to be on this side. And so there's a, there's a natural line that it could be built through. That's what we'd like to do.
I'm ready to, I'll be there next week, it's one break, but this is a grant, okay?
Yes, family, that's what I'm talking about. Yes, Diane, that's what I'm talking about. That's what, that's what I'm asking, if y'all will also participate, we may need to go through the city to get the grant, but, uh, uh, it is a, a, a bike trail.
Yes, uh-huh.
Grant, uh, that is available now, has to be done by, like, the member.
And have to start time, or...
We are, we are going to apply for that and see if we can do some future stuff, and maybe we can even give some, uh, money to help on the maintenance or of the water section, walking trail, maybe to help fix some of that in there, so. Uh, now that's another thing, I would remind you, that walk, the bike trail and the water section, walking trail are not today, so there's no way that... There's nobody can ride anything and mess up the walking trail, maybe not, maybe not can.
Is that a two-way trail or a one-way?
One, one-way off. Let me look like you said. It's, it's one-way off, as you can see in those pictures, it's, uh, it's, it's a nice...
You gonna have to open any closing time with that?
Oh, we, we'll have, have, okay, there is a...
We don't, we don't need people down there at night?
No, no, we sure do not, you can just, no, no, no. Uh, no, we don't need anybody after hours down there with anybody to walk.
You decide what y'all wanna do, the hours and all, let Diane know when we get assigned later.
Well, they are the scouts, that's one of the things they're doing. Uh, the state, uh, I guess through the Department of Natural Resources and some things, that the bike trails are formed and all, there's gonna be a kiosk thing built, and it has all the, uh, rules and regulations on it, and there's no, you know, you're riding this if you're on the bridge or so, uh, but it will have the hours, it'll have all of that and that'll be, it's a pretty good sized deal, anybody's parent can get sent over to John's, Steve's, probably, but we will, so that people can call when they're back there.
They'll need to get a permit and stay highway as long, you put that out there close on the highway. They, they require that. Then we, it's nothing to get, maybe just fill out paperwork and all the same again, and then we leave.
Did you nominate Diane to be on the bike committee?
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll lay for you to be on the bike committee. Okay, I think we're gonna be just...
I have a motion, put her on there. All right, new second, say it.
Second.
Second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Diane, you'll provide the...
Thank you, Diane, you're, you're welcome. Thank y'all, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Chief Harrison, get the report, please, partner, please.
For the month of September, there was, uh, twenty-two traffic stops conducted, the eight arrests and eighteen citations, free traffic accidents, nine teen hands, calls, eight dividends, zero burglaries for the month of September, eighteen alarm calls, one DUI for the month of, of September, and two thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine miles to shore.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Uh, Chief Gary Young, give a fire call, please.
Calls in September, fire department has twenty-nine calls in September, ten of those twenty-nine calls were yes calls, the city had ten of the twenty-nine, and only one of the ten paid. I thought the city paid even five hundred dollars for the month, uh, for the vehicle repairs. Uh, the rescue truck out of the Lakeland station, uh, shut down on call, and Robert Ford was nice enough to tow that back down, hold it for no charge, and upon inspections, uh, turned out it had some bad fuel, so that was taken care of, the truck was serviced, and so far we haven't had any more problems. Also, an ignition switch on the generator R2 was replaced. Uh, as far as the number one sign, we are receiving a few calls from the city, I signed they're off and up, so, uh, I'll be taking care of it myself along the way to the camp. So, we got that one, I think I got some six up here that's in the city.
You got to get two's gun there?
No.
Did it warn him that, though?
At what, six?
Probably, probably busting up anything.
Uh, I already get on the map, see what they're gonna be, but I had five, one, two, three, I had five calling so far without sign. We'll take care of and get them up and going. Uh, the only other thing going on is the, the air pump we're talking about came in Friday, and people are coming tomorrow to get up and running, their air professional, their backpacks, so we should have it up and running tomorrow, right, late tomorrow evening. And, uh, so, yeah, that's it.
All right, Department of Corrections is gonna be working on putting up that chain link fence down there, like, like y'all approved of now.
Yeah, the, uh, that's gonna be nice, and I think we're gonna start digging on the thing down too, man.
Yes.
They should have that thing.
Yeah, they need to start on that. Uh, they gonna have to pump that pond down a little bit. The water levels are high in there, they gotta dig a twenty-five foot hole. Uh, they called me today about pumping that pond down, and I said, Jeff, I don't wanna kill a fish, but now, right now, is the best time to do it, so, in, November, December, we, we restock that, so it'd be a good time to do that. But that chain link fence is gonna give a lot of security to the fire station, the security of the equipment, but you've had trouble out there here lately, eh?
Stolen batteries from my generator and stuff.
And it also, children getting in that pond, they're playing around and so forth.
I'm planning to be around, I gotta keep an eye on both of them projects.
All right, thank you. Uh, fines and fortunes, uh, there for them to come get it?
Claim the revenue, total revenue was six thousand fifty-eight dollars, the city's portion, uh, made three thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Okay. Uh, sanitation report, Grace, have you sure y'all got anything? Uh, water and sewer report, you got anything on that? Uh, street, street, you got anything on that, street? Uh, Pecan Street is being completed now, I believe, and Stride, and they're working on the West Pat, and the next one's gonna be, uh, Merle Street up here by the city hall going our way with Oak Street, yeah, that street we'd be working on. Count, Count, you got anything on the restoration?
City Lakeland had received, uh, grant for twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents, is, uh, local maintenance and improvement grant, and transportation, and it said it's also required that the city Lakeland match thirty percent of the funds, uh, application of the prepared project listed, and they have data, uh, done on January first, two thousand thirteen, and the county board commissioners will adopt in order to let all collected excite types of sale and use the energy, that's why I, I didn't have more information on energy, what, what is this?
That's, uh, energy would be electrical bill, and again, natural gas or gas that they spend to manufacture products. One county up there is gonna be hit over a million, eleven million dollars, eleven million dollars they're gonna lose on that project. And we've done this new automobile tax, I'd like to see newspapers write articles on that book in paper, explaining to the general public how the new tax is gonna work on cars. When you buy cars, uh, I think it's gonna be replacement of the outlaw tax, is it not? Am I right? You're gonna replace the outlaw tax, you're gonna pay all the tax on that vehicle up front? Yeah, need to see about that.
And also they said, we, we may be prepared after November, uh, commission of regular meeting, and also we're prepared, the city Lakeland prepared annual, two thousand thirteen annual budget, and also we're prepared, y'all committed some kind of, uh, two thousand twelve, uh, new block grant.
Uh, both newspapers, after the city council meeting, I got a big old check, I'd like y'all to get a copy of it, I went up to Peak Street City and got Friday, we could get four hundred and seventy-three thousand seventy-five dollars in there.
Okay, I'm gonna call a favor, if, if that's true, you have, if, if you put in a new car, that's gonna be good news.
Versus any?
Yeah, get it all up front.
I think any car, eh?
I, I, I thought it was a new, just...
Just new, that's what I'd like to see, I've heard all kinds of schools. Okay, public hearing, Randy Rogers' application for a license to sell beer and wine to be considered a premises, the name of the business, how do you pronounce that name?
Montarela Moss.
Mossa.
Montarela.
Montarela Moss, I didn't want to put it wrong, located thirty-five minutes Main Street, Lakeland, Georgia, uh, that's the site of the old bait shop and, and, uh, restaurant. Anybody got any objection to that, anybody out there in the public, audience? If I have a motion, we bring this license? Right uptown, right, right in there, where, uh, Barbara Berry Hill, old Jerry's store that place right there, Main and Center Street. I have a motion, bring that. Now, second? The issue of beer license? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye? All in favor, say aye? Aye, aye. All right, likewise, you pristine? Appoint members to the Lakeland, Lanier County Library Board, uh, I, I worked on this and asked some people, contacts some people that would be interested in this, and we've come up with two names, Nanny Davis and Nancy Patrick, said that they would like to serve on this board, they are both retired school tickets, I think everybody probably here knows them. Do, I have a motion, we'll appoint them to the Library Board. Any more to have second? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Council set a date and time for Halloween trick-or-treat for the city of Lakeland, Halloween is on the thirtieth of the month, and, uh, the Seventh Day Adventists are gonna have their deal out there on the thirtieth of the month.
The hospital?
The hospital, so, I talked around some people, and they all say have it on Wednesday at five, eight o'clock, is that okay with the council? That's the day of Halloween.
Thirty-first.
It's Thursday or the third?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, okay, thirty-first. Can I have a motion? Can I have a second? Second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Likewise?
Say five-thirty.
Five, five AM. That's what they gonna have theirs out at the hospital, five AM. Okay, number eleven, let's look over, council payable?
I think, I think it's back to the Halloween, how, how do you want to, like, all the come to go around and come out, to come to the city hall?
No, we'll go around, take the trolley, go around.
I mean, you know, you know, we had a little problem that last year, you wind up like a circle Wednesday, so, I think, if we want to ask the city council, do they wanna do that, if not, then we should just tell them to come to the city hall, because it's not fair for them to want, people, uh, two people to go around and come down, to the, to the city council. So, you know, you can look into that.
Okay, we'll look into that. Any questions there? Okay, anybody got any questions about council payable? I have a motion that the bills be made, so, any more to have second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye? Okay, we have an executive session for personnel, but I'd like to take a minute, and I said to Mayo and Billy, I said, Mayo, by here, Mayo and Billy, I said, we got the governor coming, and we got the lieutenant governor, we want Lakeland to look good, let me tell you, they work hard, didn't Lakeland look good, the governor showed up, let's give him a hand. They always did, they always did, but I mean Lakeland to look good, I'd be proud of it, they ain't put new pine straw around the city hall, they put new pine straw across Walms downtown, cleaned out the weeds and grass and, and most, they'd work all the time, but, uh, they made it special, occasional, and I know Sandy Sanders won't be cleaning for those people to come, we keep Lakeland that way, we keep it...
I have to say he did recognize that, didn't he?
Oh, he did?
Yes, he did, he recognized it, well, he had the key to it.
Good, I missed it, good, good, thank you for sharing that with us. That means a lot, if the governor come down, down, I should see those, that means a lot. Okay, now I have a motion, we go to executive session? Second? All in favor, say aye? We'll be back in a few minutes. Uh, we go out of executive session? Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Likewise, I have a motion, we adjourn. Have a second? All in favor, say aye?